Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you would please stand for invocation and pledge.
He'll join me in the invocation. I do heavenly Father, when a tragedy happens in this country, I'll stand together. Please bring comfort to the people in Orlando and the families that have been represented there. Lead and guide this council. All this we ask in the holy and precious name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Keeling, the pledge. Excuse me, the whole, please. We know you ought to say the pledge, we just heard it. Roll, please.
Carrie, you're on to Ward 1. Here. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsfire, Ward 3. Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Yes.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Taffrey, Ward 6.
Thank you, Connie. Our first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our June 2nd meeting. Council, you all had these well in advance tonight, had an opportunity to look them over, and assuming that you did such, and with that assumption, I would say that any motions to make any edits would be, not be time to make them, if not a motion to approve would be in order.
Mayor, there was just a couple of typos. Ms. Keeling and I talked about it, and we have a revised version to be submitted.
Okay, nothing that's substantial or changes the content or anything?
No, sir.
So with those amendments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We are going to add an item to the agenda discussion item at the beginning, at council's approval, so I'll ask council to add that discussion item to the top of the agenda this evening.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And that item is added, I will, I will call forward Mr. Franco Rossi with Aqua Fill Corporation, who wanted to, of course, they're longtime customers of the city of Cartersville, and a company that's been a great partner with the city for a number of years, and would like to address council this evening. So, Mr. Rossi, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening.
And I'm sorry, just for our clerk, your name, obviously, but your address for formal matters.
Okay, my name is Franco Rossi, and I'm the president of Aqua Fill USA. My personal address, my home address, is 5175 Hethburn Court, H-A-T-H-B-U-R-N Court in Dunwoody, 30338, Georgia. Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, once again, good evening, and thanks for the opportunity that you've given me to be heard. I have, as a president of Aqua Fill USA, I've sent a letter to this council early in June. I suppose you have received the letter and read it, so I will try to be brief and not elaborate any further on the content of the letter. I assume you, you know the content of it. The bottom line is that we, as Aqua Fill, we believe that we have not been given a good service from the quality standpoint, from the City of Cartersville Electric, and I don't think that they deliver the service which is adequate for the kind of industry we are in. So we are a fiber extrusion company, and we require continuously consistent electrical service in order to perform our manufacturing at the level that we need to. We believe that we have asked many times to the director of your service, of the electrical service, and to the city manager to correct and to provide us with the quality of service that we needed, and after so many years, we have not seen any significant change. We still experience a lot of malfunctioning or inconsistent service, and this has costed us millions of dollars during this past eight to 10 years. As a consequence, I have asked, and I'm asking this council to give us permission to change vendor and to use the alternate vendor which is available in Cartersville, because we believe that that vendor has proven, in our other location here in Cartersville, and with some other competitors, to deliver the service that we need, which is pretty much uninterrupted, consistent electrical service. I would say that after I sent the letter, in the last two weeks since I sent the letter, I had some conversation, or we had some conversation, myself and my, my team, we had some conversation with the department, the electric department of City of Cartersville, and they have suggested or indicated that they are now ready to implement some different plans in order to correct the problem. In brief, I mean, this plan would consist of building a exclusively destined, a substation which be exclusively destined to our service in the vicinity of our plant, and we believe that that would be a good solution to address the problem. Still, the term of this solution, at least at the moment, are not completely clear, so we don't know how long this is going to take, and when exactly the, this new substation will be located. So it's, we appreciate the, I would say, the knowledge from the electrical service that they recognize that there is a problem, and so they recognize that a solution is needed. Still, I don't think we have a clear understanding of the timing and an exact way this solution will be, will be made. And so I, I would like to suspend my request, say for 30 days, and waiting for the electrical service to provide us a detailed plan with timing and technical specification of how the proposed solution is going to be implemented. As I have the opportunity to be heard by you, I would like to take another three minutes of your time to also tell you that definitely the quality of the service has been our major concern for the past several years, but I want you to be aware that also from a pricing standpoint, the service that the Aqua Fill, the, sorry, that City of Cartersville Electric provide is not at the level of their main competitors. We buy, as you know, electricity from Georgia Power at our other plant, and the cost is approximately two-thirds of what we pay at the one Aqua Fill Drive plant, even if the consumption at the one Aqua Fill Drive plant, which is serviced by City of Cartersville, is three times as large as what we buy at Friction Drive. And we have also tested some other competitors we buy from Georgia Power, and they all pay significantly less of what we pay at City of Cartersville. So I, of course, if you, if a City of Cartersville Electric implement the plan that has been briefly described, I think that would definitely resolve a good portion of our problem, that would probably eliminate for us the, the need, or the main reason to relocate our plant, but I'm afraid that if there's not a change in the price policy, it would be hard for us to imagine future investment at that site, as we have a different site in the same town where we pay electricity, two-thirds of what we pay at the Aqua Fill Drive site. So it's a common sense and business sense decision that, you know, if we need, as we need, to, to, to put down more machinery, more equipment, that will be done where the cost is more competitive, because we all, we work in a very competitive industry, and we need to fight competition, which is based in the whole southeast region of the United States, from Camden, South Carolina, to Bristol, Virginia, to Dalton, Georgia, and we all are perfectly aware that the cost of energy is significantly less of the ones that we pay at City of Cartersville Electric in Cartersville. That's it. Having said that, thank you so much for your attention, and thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to, yeah, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we're going to come back with the rest of our agenda tonight, so I'll temporarily, I don't need a motion for that, I'm going to just do it.
You just do a hammer.
Right, I got a hammer. Go ahead and call the council meeting back to order. We do have an additional number of items to go through tonight, so Mr. Reinhardt, if you'll get us started out with the budget ordinance for FY 1617, please, sir.
Honorable mayor and council, this is the second reading of the budget ordinance. There have been no changes since the first reading. A little bit of quick talk of the budget. The proposed budget for the fiscal year 2016-17 is the balanced budget. It increases $11,392,000 to $105 over the fiscal year 2015-16 budget. The total budget for next year will be $157,8385. It does include the following. It adjusts all salaries, salary adjustments in all departments, an increase of $1 million in the city's property tax mileage rate, includes school system funding, and slight increase in staff, an increase in health insurance premiums for both the city and the employees, an increase in residential water and sewer rates, an increase in the basic monthly water and sewer rate. It further reduces electric rates and decreases the transfers to the general fund from the electric, gas, and water funds. I recommend approval of the proposed fiscal year 2016-17 as the budget is presented, and I would like to also include the motion to include mayor's signature on the contract for the outside agencies, that'd be the library, the...
JDA.
Yes.
Library, JDA, Downtown Bell, well, Downtown, they're no longer in it.
Yes.
Cultural Arts Alliance, Bartow County Jubilee Court, Annie Lee Wilkins Association, Good Neighbor Home and Shelter, Bartow County Library, Inc., and Bartow Health Access.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on the budget? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Council, opportunity for further discussion or for a motion?
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to include the recommendations by Mr. Reinhardt. I'd like to amend the budget ordinance to say authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the outside agencies. Also, that should all be inserted into the June 16 minutes.
Okay.
So I make a motion with that amendment for the budget for 2016-17.
Thank you.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign. The motion carries unanimously.
But I know Diane normally says this, but thank you to all the staff, everybody, you know, I know it takes a long time to do this, so...
Well, the other part of it, is we, you know, we, there's been a lot of time put into making it, and there's been a lot of time put into looking at it. This is kind of the culmination of a lot of the work that went in, going back to our visioning session, and kind of working against a wall. It takes just a few minutes to do something like this. It's not something that hasn't been looked at thoroughly, vetted, and a lot of time and consideration by everybody in this room, so for that, I'll echo Jason Sedgman to say thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please, Mr. Reinhardt.
Honorable mayor and council, this again is the second reading for the amendment to the utility ordinance regarding water and sewer rates. Again, knowing, no changes to the first reading. This is a change of the water and sewer rates. Basically, it's two-part. The first part is a seven-and-a-half percent increase in the residential water and sewer rates, and also the second part is a seven-and-a-half percent increase in the base monthly water and sewer rate. A little explanation of what this entails. The residential customers, the water and sewer rate, base tier rate, will be an increase of about $0.57 per 100 cubic feet used by residential customers, and $1.05 per 100 cubic feet for outside the city. The total estimated increase for residential water and sewer customers is about $3.38 per month on 7,500, 100 gallons used. Second part, the water and sewer system fund, also proposes a seven-and-a-half percent increase in the base monthly tier. Again, this is, the current rate is $7.61 a month, the new proposed rate is $8.18 a month, and this equates to a $0.57 a month increase. Without these increases, of course, as we've talked about, we've got a lot of issues going on in the water department, needs to be fixed, need so forth and so on, I won't go over all that, but essentially, I recommend the approval of the proposed water and sewer rate increases to begin July 1st, 2016.
Okay. Any questions for Tom on this item? And I'm saying, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but there's no changes in that from the first reading, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for that recap, and is there any other questions for Tom on this item? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tom.
If there's not any further discussion, and if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Porter, you got the next item, please.
Yes, mayor and council, this is the second reading in the hotel motel tax ordinance. This ordinance will amend the rate from 6% to 8%. The state legislature approved this, and this ordinance will take effect August 1st if approved.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Porter on this item? This does put us in line with everybody else in the state?
In just general areas, Cobb County and other local cities in there.
Very good. If there's no question or discussion, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chief Carter, you have the next item, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. I bring before you this evening for your consideration an emergency reading of a city ordinance that affects the sale and the use of consumer fireworks here within the city of Cartersville. In 2015, the Georgia General Assembly passed a fireworks law legalizing fireworks within the state of Georgia. Our local delegation actually led some changes in this past session in 2016 that changed the framework of OCGA 25 that covers fireworks. Tonight, we're requesting that our ordinance be brought in compliance with this new state law that has been signed by the governor and is now in effect. There are three primary areas of changes. The first one deals with those of temporary sales, they will no longer be allowed in tents, they'll be used in portable type structures. The second one changes the hours of actual usage of consumer fireworks. Fireworks will be able to be ignited from 10:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m., non-holidays. After 9:00 p.m., noise ordinances would come into effect within the city of Cartersville. There is extended hours for holidays on New Year's Eve and on January, or July the 4th. The third and final thing, would, it would also enable us to restrict the use of consumer fireworks in our city parks and across governmental property, which after extensive meetings between the police chief and myself, the recreation department, and the city attorney, we do agree that it is a public safety issue of consumer fireworks to be able to be utilized within city property. So this is also within that part of the ordinance. This is a time-sensitive issue with the 4th of July quickly upon us. City attorney and staff has drafted this ordinance and does approve this ordinance, and we respectfully ask for your positive consideration.
I'm sorry, I, just as you were mentioning with that last item, I know we talked about it in work session, at the use of items, I'm sitting here thinking on a, not like this one, there's nobody else out at Sam Smith Park, if somebody wants to fire off a bottle rocket or something, or even, that's, that is, that would be forbidden in this ordinance, correct?
After 9:00 p.m.?
I didn't...
Oh, Sam Smith Park, yes, that would be correct.
Yeah, any, any public property for that, any of the city properties?
Greg Anderson, as director of the Parks and Recs, he has established certain rules for operation for particular city properties, and those areas within those parks that would not allow consumer fireworks would be posted, primarily such as Dillinger. If, within his rules of operation, if, as the director of parks, if he has no objection in Sam Smith, then that would solely be up to him. But what the law changes from '15 to '16 actually allow us as a government to do is local control to be able to make sure that we have safe events everywhere.
I guess my only concern, because again, I go back to last year when you have a full Dillinger partner in the 4th of July...
Correct.
And somebody could have theoretically been firing off explosives just in the middle of a crowd versus a time when the park is not crowded.
Right.
I guess the only thing I would ask, certainly an operational thing, we're going to pass on to Greg, is to make sure if there are areas, that we just at least have it posted so somebody doesn't innocently break a rule that's...
Correct, and that is part of the meeting that, the last meeting that we had, I guess, approximately two weeks ago before this came forth, was to talk about the actual posting and the enforcement of that.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, could have handled that prior, but, all right.
Mayor, I want to mention, I worked on this some, but Chief Carter really took leadership in the whole state, working on this and trying to bring it back to local control and making some real sense of the original ordinance, and I appreciate that very much.
And I would also thank our state representative, Paul Battles, for his, his hard work and leadership in the House, and helping that out at the state level. Any other questions or discussion? This is an emergency reading for good reason, so that we can get this approved and in place and enforceable by the 4th of July, it's coming in a couple of weeks before our next meeting.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
I was speaking about fireworks on any given evening, like weekend, I hear fireworks all the time.
Yes, sir. Within this ordinance change, they will be able to shoot fireworks up until 9:00 p.m. on any given evening. After 9:00 p.m., up until 11:59, then the city noise ordinance would take, would come into play at that point in time, to where if it was a violation of the city noise ordinance, it would give Cartersville PD the authority then to be able to enforce and stop. Currently, the way our ordinance is written, the way the old law was, we had no enforcement capabilities whatsoever.
Thank the state legislature for that, we're doing what we can do.
My dogs, thank you.
Yes, my dogs.
Any other discussion or questions, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor, that motion has got to state that it's an emergency motion and reasons for the motion.
Okay. Well, I stated it, but I guess it needs to be restated since I wasn't part of the motion, so... Who gave that motion?
Of course I did.
Okay, so that motion is, well...
It's an emergency because the 4th of July is coming, right?
For public safety.
Motion to approve emergency amendment to the ordinance for public safety.
All right, so that was your motion. Who made the second amendment?
I did.
Thank you, Lindsay. Assuming that stands, and all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Assuming all that stands, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Archer, for keeping us clear and free of danger. Ms. Reed, you have the next item, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am here to request the creation of a festival zone for our July concert series. It's going to be taking place every Friday for the month of July from 7:00 p.m. till 11:00 p.m. The festival zone that I'm asking for will be strictly in the Friendship Plaza area, so no parking lot closures, no road closures. We do not have any sponsors, although I did point out to the mayor that we have all of these bands performing for free, and a downtown business to provide the alcohol for the festival zone.
Sounds great.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Pleasure to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Wilson, you have the next item, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Before you, there's an annual agreement with Floyd County for three-and-a-half inmate work details. Two of these details are attached to public works. One and a half is with the Parks and Recreation Department. Total contract amount with Floyd County would be $218,646.43 per year. That equals to $62,470.41 per full-time crew. Along with that will be $7.50 per day for each minimum security inmate. This is a budgeted item, and we do recommend approval of this.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you earlier, how many's on the crew?
It varies somewhat, but I would estimate around six to seven.
And why do we pay the minimum security ones and enough of the others?
Okay, that's a good question. Minimum security, they do not have to have a corrections officer with them, so they have special privileges, so, but what, we do have to have our, anyone who's working with them has to be trained by the prison, so they know what to do in case there's a situation. But they are, the minimum security is that, they do not have to have a corrections officer with them, so they're sent out by themselves. These minimum security detail, a lot of them go with our solid waste drivers. You, there's been one with the garage before, I don't think they're using one this year.
Yeah, I see them on the garbage trucks.
Yep. Any other questions?
All, all the questions here. Anybody have any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wade.
So moved.
Oh, yeah, motion to approve, you might want that.
Thank you. Motion to approve, and you get a second now?
I will give a second, yes, sir.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'm going to ask council to add four items to the agenda. Need a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Four items are added. Our next item, Mr. Gordon, if you'll step forward and give us the two items that you have tonight.
Mayor and council, the first item I have on the agenda is the purchase of irrigation for Dillon, J. Park, 4, 5, and 6. We sent out to local companies, asking for them to bid on this. Tibble Lawn Care came back with a price of $45,200, it's a low bid. We had budgeted originally 60, but after some staff meetings, a meeting with the irrigation folks, we dropped it down to 50, so it is up under budget.
Okay, very good. This is coming, this coming out of the...
Coming out of the bond money.
Thank you.
And this is replacing a system that is going on 30 years old, and the parts are not available to fix.
I think 30 years out of an irrigation system's pretty good. Any questions, comments, or if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
The second item is, in 2014, Cartersville City Council approved the request of a utility certification with the Georgia Department of Transportation involving the leak mounds and the Etowah River Walk. With the change in ownership of these transmission lines on said property, Georgia Power is asking, it sold to Georgia Transmission Company, and GDOT is asking for us to have a reapproval of this letter, and so we're asking that, for this utility railroad certification and grant this GDOT approval.
Nice to have a signature.
Thank you. Chair, want to take a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gordon. Mr. Porter, the next two, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am. First item I have is the workers' compensation renewal for 2017-18 budget, 16-17 budget. The city's been self-insured since 2007 with a high deductible insurance of half million dollars. Midwest Casualty Insurance provides that coverage for us. The annual renewal premium for two-year rate guarantee is $55,621, that's a two-year rate guarantee for that. Also, I'm asking for approval with third-party administrator processing claims we have at $9,900, and I recommend approval of both these items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next item, mayor, is the property and casual insurance. Currently, we've been insured with one big insurance company for the past three years. Due to high claims, they have denied to renew us for the upcoming year, and Terry Watkins and Apex Insurance have worked together to come up with a proposal from Travelers and Liberty Mutual to provide coverage for us for the upcoming fiscal year. Cost of that annual premium is $403,205. I do ask for permission to approval of $420,000, because that, as the department has to go through the property schedule to see if there's any additional buildings we need to insure. additional buildings we need to insure, there appears to be some, so I recommend approval not to exceed a premium of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So, we're going to add buildings on to a new policy that were not on the old policy?
There are some things that we've, make sure, we want, I want to make sure they're covered, because what happened at Cook Street property, at the gas building, two buildings were on there as one site, and that's been a situation we're trying to work through with insurance, current insurance company, to cover both of that.
Basically, just doing an audit of our buildings and making sure that everything that we're trying to get covered, gets covered.
Correct, in case we have another catastrophe like we had this year, we want to make sure that there's coverage provided.
Why do we have two agents for this?
We, a couple of years ago, the city council approved the local agent to help in the process, I sent out bids for broker coverage, and at that point in time, the broker that we had provided the policy, and the local broker or local agent was able to work on, helping assist with that.
Do we still need to utilize two agents?
I don't know if I can answer that question, if, maybe Mr. Watkins can address that, because I don't know about the coverage wise, I mean, if they, if he can provide both, the policy on both, his agent for both of these.
Yeah, we got a pretty clear direction from council, if that's what they want to do at the time.
Okay.
We needed a local component at the time, we didn't have one.
We have a local one now?
Yep.
Set in the back row.
Okay, so, will a local component be the agent on this?
They're sharing it, I mean, I don't know if he can provide everything, he'd have to address that on, because he knows more the background of what the insurance companies like Travelers and Liberty Mutual, what their requirements are.
The feeling from councils that we needed somebody kind of in our corner that was local, that kind of understood everything, we went through the vetting process.
I think TAF might be getting more at, is Terry capable of doing it, why do we have?
Why do we have to have this other group that we initially needed to have, use them if we don't need to use them any longer? That's kind of what I'm getting at. So, what it sounds like you're saying to me, is that our local can now directly handle, is it, am I right on this, or wrong?
Well, I don't, well, I'm trying, let me try to put it, I don't know what I'm going to say right here, but.
Well, then I'm going to pay attention here.
That's usually your role.
I'm going to suddenly swap seats here for a minute. I don't know, I wouldn't know how to answer that question, because I would, I typically take the, I would say in a situation like this, the staff recommendation and the fact that he's been working with Mr. Watkins in getting us to this point, certainly it's something that perhaps, if it needs to be revisited for our next fiscal year, that might be a great conversation to have, and again, smarter people need to answer your question better than I can right now, other than the fact that.
Well, I'll put in my, I mean, Lori and I sat on a committee, and from what, and Mr. Watkins can maybe fill in here, but their industry, he would be going to a, another broker anyways, so he's, I think, is that close, that he would be using?
Possibly would have to, possibly not.
Great.
First thing, I just like the leeway to build a, over, I think, the best, the city that they tied to anything.
So that needs to be something that maybe needs to be looked at in the future. Is that good for you?
So, what you're saying is, you still need it to go through Apex?
And I'm sorry, Terry, if we're going to involve you in the conversation, come on up and speak into the microphone.
I just, there's obviously, he knows.
We're going to, we'll ask Mr. Watkins to come forward and address.
He knows what coverage he can provide, and.
Basically, Apex, who Michael White has been the agent for, he is the agent of record for the city, all right, he works for Apex when I was brought in to work with Dan and basically work with him, so everything that's done, pretty much, I go through Apex, who is the broker that represents One Beacon, all right, so this year, right at the last minute, we find out that One Beacon is not going to renew the policy, so I go back to Apex and say, hey, you know, you've been telling me all along you're going to renew the policy, and all of a sudden, you're not going to renew it, what happened? Said, well, we didn't know anything about it either, don't worry about it, we got a, we're getting another quote with Travelers, and I said, well, I represent Travelers, I can get a quote with Travelers, and they said, well, we've already got one in the works, and, so, it's, it's kind of like I'm, I'm having to work with Apex where I could work with several, they're not the only people in the state that do this, so I would like the leeway to try to not necessarily always go through them, go through whoever, you know, which could provide the best coverage and the best price for the city, which I could have gone to Travelers, the Liberty Mutual, you know, I would have had to gone through Apex, there's a lot of different brokers that represent both, not just, just Apex, so in some cases, yes, I might have to use a broker to get the best price, in some cases I would not, it just all depends, you know, my job is to make sure that the city's getting... Who's Prue?
Prue used to be Apex.
Oh, okay, so. Well, it was public risk underwriters, and they were purchased by Apex, and that's who they are now, Michael White is still.
I just remembered, I just remembered the Prue.
It doesn't look like it's a whole lot of increase in cost, even with the loss that we've experienced, though.
No.
Are you saying that we could probably reduce the cost even further?
Ah, you don't know unless you check and see, basically, it's kind of whoever they want to provide the, you know, who they want to get a quote from, and they say, well, we checked it with other ones, and this is the best one, which, which may be or may not, but then.
They're meaning Apex.
Pardon me?
They, meaning Apex.
Right.
Yes.
But then again, if, you know, if we, if part of it goes through a company I represent direct, then I'm going direct to that company instead of having to go through someone else.
There's no, there's no services that Apex, in regards to Travelers, offers that you wouldn't be able to offer the city?
I mean, I don't really know what they, they're, all they are really is just a go-between, go-between before, for me and dealing with them, I mean, I don't, unless they contact Dan and do something, I don't really know what, I mean, I deal with them as an underwriter just like, and then they turn around, they deal with the underwriter at the company, go back to them, back to me, but I mean, we're at a point now where we're, we're right there at the renewal, so. So this needs to be something to definitely look at next year.
Wouldn't that mean that you need to beat the bushes a little bit, kind of find new solutions?
Bigger?
Yeah, the future.
Yeah, I think if I can get us back to, and I appreciate your comments and the education, Mr. Watkins, I guess, again, a very good point, kind of cut us a little bit smarter tonight, and, and perhaps something that gets put on the council list to take a look at for next year, but if I'm looking at the agenda, we've got this decision to make right here, right now, again, if there's still more discussion, I don't want to, I don't want to cut it off.
I'm just confused why, we've got someone who can handle it directly, why do we have to go through multiple channels to get to the same ends?
And I'm saying, moving forward, we can certainly take a look at that, when we first got into this relationship, that may or may not have been the case, and it also was, and we were in a situation where council felt that we didn't have, that we wanted a local presence, so historically, it made a lot of sense, presently, it looks like it might need a little bit of tweaking.
Well, I'm going to say, if we've already got a local, if we've already got a local presence, why not utilize the local presence for the entirety of the insurance, not have to bounce through a second party to then go back to the same provider when he, when our local presence can go ahead and do that directly.
Right.
Right, so, is that, was that what we're saying we're going to do today?
Yeah.
You agree? I'm just saying that I don't see why we have to.
When does it renew, though, that's what we need to.
I'm saying, we're up.
It runs through June thirty, you'd have that, you'd have to dedicate a new agent of record, basically.
Yeah, we're up against it, we have to.
Does that, I mean, does that matter? I mean, maybe I'm asking the wrong guy, does it mean if we just say tonight, we approve this, and we approve Terry Watkins and Watkins Agency as our agent of record, does that change any of this?
He would have to go directly to Travelers and Liberty Mutual, is my understanding, and make sure that they're going to honor their quotes and renew and everything, and if he's already got a contract with Travelers, and.
But eleven dollar quote, we just, we would have to see if they would take that, an agent of record letter this close to a renewal.
Let's see if they'd cut Apex out.
They have to give current agent so many days, and we're.
Well, without, I mean, can we?
Mr. Archer?
I don't want this stuff.
Look in your eye.
Well, I think you could just let the insurance lapse and spend a couple of months talking about it.
You're doing a good job, not all of them right there.
I mean, you got, you got a, you got a policy lapsing on June the thirty, Terry, could you go back to them, and when's our next meeting?
July the seventh.
Okay, I think your back's against the wall here, and I think you need to consider what's on the table, you can vote it up or down.
But, I mean, the advice on who you designate as your agent of record, that's?
It's a very good point that TAF is making, and needs to be looked at next year, I think that man sitting in the back row needs to be an agent of record, and we need to start moving forward to get that done, and send him a local, and thank you for catching that.
That's what I'm getting at, yes.
I mean, you caught something important, and brought it to the table, it needs to be looked at, I didn't catch it.
You just suggested all that insurance.
Yeah, I just let it.
He wants to talk to you.
That's right. So, then, obviously, you and Terry will get together and figure out what's the best course of action after today in regards to getting him agent of record, and then whenever that's available to bring him forward, you'll bring it forward.
If he's directed to do that, again.
Well, you're saying it can't be in the motion, right?
I'm just saying, the thing on the table right now is the approval of, either the approval or denial of our property and casualty insurance for sixteen, seventeen, and we could either vote that up or down now, and then we could have all kinds of great conversations, again, TAF, I think it's a great point you make, we need to talk about it, and perhaps move in a different direction, but, said right now, we just, we got it, we got an up or down vote on this property and casualty insurance renewal.
I make motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Mr. Porter, and thank you, Mr. Wren, Mr. Jones, you've got the next two items, please, actually, three, thank you.
Yes, sir, good evening, everyone, first up, the Mission Road sewer replacement, this is phase two, this will be about nine hundred feet of sewer that is mapped on the nineteen sixteen Poindexter map, this stuff has been in service for quite a while, and this project gets directly at one of our primary focuses, which is the rehab and/or removal of aging infrastructure, and we feel like on this hundredth anniversary of the mapping of this sewer, it's actually older than that, that now's a good time to replace it, we've had several sewer overflows, we've had issues with it for decades, that being the case, we took bids on the replacement, Wade Coots Company was the low bidder at three hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars even, would, that bid has been reviewed by the design engineer, and that is their recommendation, as is mine, for your approval.
Okay, any discussion on this? If not a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, next one, please, Bob.
Yes, sir, does the order of these matter, because I don't remember the order that we did them in.
Center Road Pump Repair was the second item.
Okay, Center Road Pump Repair, as you recall, council authorized a new replacement pump for our two-pump system at Center Road Pump Station in February of this year, we received that pump in the last two weeks, during the installation and trials of the new pump, we tested the old pump and found that the twelve-hundred-and-fifty-gallon pump was only pumping eight-hundred gallons a minute, that's indicative of a severe problem, as you can imagine, we contacted Patterson Pump, the pump manufacturer, they have given us a quote of fifty-five-hundred-and-eighty dollars plus freight for the parts required to repair that pump, so I would ask you for a not-to-exceed of six thousand dollars to give us some wiggle room on shipping and get that thing back in service.
Okay, any discussion, and if not, a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Center Road Pump Repair not to exceed six thousand bucks.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and then the crane rental.
Last up, our crane rental, a few weeks ago, we had a aerator go out on one of our major aeration basins at the wastewater plant, those of you who have been out there, you know these things kind of sit out on an island, they weigh about six thousand pounds, so it's a long reach and a pretty heavy pull to get those things off, we contacted Southway Crane, they wound up being the company that had the first available crane, they gave us a time and materials quote, had them come out, replace the aerator, the invoice wound up being five thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents, so would ask your approval, and would like to add that this is the definition of an emergency in our industry, we saw analytical results that showed us that the plant was degrading, and, you know, if we had waited another week or two, there is a very real chance we would have lost the plant and violated our permit, so this was a, this was definitely a do-it-as-s soon-as-possible issue.
Okay, thank you, Chair, want to take a motion?
Motion to approve.
Aye.
All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Gary, the next two, please, three, thank you.
The first one is, we received a bid of sixty-nine hundred dollars for a hydrologic analysis of the Old Mill property, and I recommend approval of that.
Okay, pretty straightforward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is, we got a price for forty-four hundred feet of six-inch PE, and the total price is twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars, and it's a sole source supplier.
Okay, once again, pretty straightforward, any questions, comments, and if not a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and your final item, Gary?
We got a bid from Geo Hydro, that's the people who did the soil analysis at, for Cook Street, and this is to do that at Old Mill, and the bid is sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Okay, once again, any discussion, and if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thanks.
Last item on our agenda tonight is our monthly financial report, Mr. Ryan Hardfield, grace us with that report.
I'll try to run through this as quickly as possible.
That is fantastic.
Our mayor and council tonight will be reviewing the April two thousand and sixteen and comparing it to April two thousand and fifteen, and the general fund revenues increased over last year by nine point eight million dollars, going back to the first part of the year where the school system paid off the bond, expenses also increased by nine point one million dollars, again, also due mostly to the school bond payoff, three areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis, local option sales tax compared to last April, we are, we have a decrease of about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, police fines and forfeiture have a decrease of about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, and billing permits and inspection fees have a decrease of about fourteen thousand dollars. The water and sewer fund revenues increased over last year by six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, expenses decreased by one point one million dollars, and this is due mainly to decreased capital expenditures, and the gas fund revenues decreased over last year by four million dollars, expenses decreased by two point seven million, this is due mainly to decreased cost of purchased gas, and the electric fund revenues have increased over last year by eight point, I'm sorry, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, expenses decreased by three, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, this is due mainly to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased capital expenses, coupled largely with a large decrease in cost of purchased electricity, and the stormwater fund revenues increased from last year by five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, expenses decreased by three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, this is due to decreased operating expenses and decreased capital expenses, the solid waste fund revenues increased over last year by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, and expenses decreased by ninety-four thousand dollars, this is due mainly to decreased capital expenses, and finally, in the fiber objects fund, revenues increased over last year by fifty-seven thousand dollars, expenses increased by sixty-four thousand dollars, this is due to increased personnel. over last year by $57,000. Expenses increased by $64,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. That is my report for the evening.
Any questions for Tom on the financial reports? Mr. Grove, any comments to add?
No, I think everything was in balance. We had one that was in deficit for the month.
Other than it's still amazing that our sales tax numbers are going down. There's, again, quarter of a million dollars, roughly a quarter of a million dollars less when compared to April of last year.
Correct.
There's no direction or derivative given to us from the Department of Revenue to know why that is. We anticipate.
Not that I'm aware of. I think, I think we've gone through this.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we go through it just about every time, but it's worth repeating every time. Sales tax numbers, despite the fact that there's, appears to be a lot of activity out there, the numbers that are coming back to us are a little bit, oh, they're off. So I think we think that a big part of that is in the utility sector relative to the redoing of how gas taxes collected, lower gas prices, which is good for a lot of us, but it's one downside. Anyway, thank you for the report. Any other questions on that?
Mayor, thanks for bringing that to everyone's attention, because it's been going on for a long time. We just don't understand and explain to us why activity is there and how it's taxed, everybody.
Right.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else that needs to come before council this evening? I will simply say this is our last meeting before the Fourth of July, so happy Fourth to those, to everybody, quite honestly. But also note, there's parade activities out of Dillinger. We've got a new fireworks ordinance in place. Hopefully, after I sign that, to make sure we follow all those fun rules. And also remember, quite honestly, that a lot of the folks, while everybody's out enjoying the festivities, that there's a lot of folks that work for this organization that'll be on-call around the clock if something happens in a time of need. We appreciate their sacrifice in doing that, along with the sacrifices of everybody that makes that holiday celebratable. So thank you for that. Also, do want to note that our friends up in Kingston, they lost their mayor this week, Mayor Ronald Casey, who I believe served at three different times, overlapping through different periods. I know he was a coach and an educator, and I just want to extend our condolences to the Kingston folks up the road and to his family and those that knew him. So I wanted that put into the record. So, that being said, anyone else? If not, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Adjourn. Did not get a burp out of that guy?